Let us all strive to be worthy of your beneficent night.
Om Sarva Mangala Mangalya Varanyama Paragam Shubham Om Namoh Bhagavate Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Namoh Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Sarva Mangala Mangalya Varanyama Paragam Shubham Om Namoh Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Namoh Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Namoh Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Namoh Bhagavate Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Namoh Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Sarva Mangala Mangalya Varanyama Paragam Shubham Om Namoh Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Namoh Bhagavate Sveeravindayai Om Namoh Bhagavate Sveeravindayai
Life Divine by Luvadarkaha From the beginning of this life, we will share this wonderful life with our friends. Good morning to our good uncle, our good sister and our good brother. In this chapter, we will share our personal experiences, our personal thoughts and our personal experiences. Good evening, everyone. We will start with Life Divine Book 1. We will start from the beginning of the book. The chapter is 7. The Ego and the Dualities. Ego, as we know, is the self. It is the ego that makes us different from other beings. Dualities. In this world, who is different? Opposites. Positive, negative, friendship, love, happiness, happiness, sorrow, memory. All these are what we have in our memories. In this world, the world is the teacher's lesson. He says, what is the reason for seeing such things? We have seen the paragraphs 4 and 5 in the previous session. In this session, we have seen paragraph 6. What we have seen in the paragraphs 4 and 5 in the previous session? In this... Dualities. In this dualities, who is different? The person who is different from other beings, has assigned values. How? This is friendship, this is friendship, this is sorrow, this is happiness. The person has assigned values to these different beings. What is the reason for seeing such things? What is the reason for seeing such things? When the person is different, he has to care about these different beings. So, seeing such beings, it changes everything for every person. Whether it is a person or something else, it has to care about it. So, these different beings, these beings that have been cared about by the people, are different beings. Ego. We cannot understand ego correctly. How can we understand ego correctly? The meaning of ego is that we must understand the meaning of ego correctly. Good uncle, good uncle, what is the meaning of ego? The ego is that I am a different being, a self. That is the ego behavior. Ego. The ego. This is the ego behavior. So, the meaning of ego is that I am a different being, a self. That is what the good uncle says. That is the right proof. We cannot doubt ego. Ego is the proof. Ego. The ego. The ego. All these are ego behavior. What is the reason for seeing such beings in this chapter? The reason for seeing such beings is that our ego is the reason for seeing such beings. These different beings have destroyed their ego in our homes. So, what does God say? He says that we must make things right from the beginning. We must make things right. He has to enlarge his consciousness. What does God say? He asks two things. First, he has to enlarge his consciousness. Second, he has to universalize his consciousness. He has to enlarge his consciousness. So, he will leave this ego. So, he will understand this world and this world. There are many tips in paragraph 1, 2, 3. In this moment, God gives some tricks. What tricks? First, we are a saraasari person. We are a person who is willing to do something for others. This is why we have some comforts and blessings. This is the right thing. It is good for the person who is in the right condition. For the sake of the peaceful life, we have to change the way we live. If we see this, it is because we are a person who is willing to do something for others. This is what God says to the person. This is what God says to the person. This is what God says to the person. He says that we must make things right for a person who is not willing to do anything. When a person makes his own consciousness, when he makes his own consciousness, when the beings that are affected by them make things right, he must make things right. A new light comes. He must understand these things well. If he understands them well, he will become a new one. Then, he will make his own beings. Whether he lives in this world or not, he will make things right. He has problems in his memories. He cannot live in peaceful life. He says that this is a trick. God says that we should make our consciousness well. But at the same time, whether we understand it correctly or not, whether we live in this world or not, we must make something special. If we are not, we will never live in this world. If we live in this world, what is the reason? If we live in this world, we will never live in this world. To enlarge the sense faculties without the knowledge that would give the old sense values their right interpretation, from the new standpoint might lead to serious disorders and incapacities, might unfit for practical life and for the orderly and disciplined use of the reason. We are doing a lot of practical practice now. It is a new light. It is good for us to make things right. We cannot discard this. What we should do is that we cannot lead a normal life. This is a... We see that some people are doing this. In peaceful life, they see an imbalance. Many people see an imbalance. Because they have reached the end of their year. They have no reason to bother themselves in their memories. But what does God say? We cannot discern anything. We must take everything into account. You cannot discard anything. That is what we cannot discard. But we have to transform it. If you want to discard it, we cannot lead a practical life. It is a year. What is the reason? We are doing a lower sense mind. The beings that are affected by them live in peaceful life. It is not possible to do it. But if we have a new consciousness, it is possible to do it. That is what we need to observe. The lower sense mind will not cease to be functional but will be transformed by the higher state of consciousness. If a person reaches the end of their year, he cannot discard it. It has to be included and transformed. That is what integral yoga is. We cannot discern anything. If we change it, we will disconnect from the higher state. We will be unfit to lead the ordinary life. Because we cannot lead a life. We have to transform everything. That is what we need to observe. A new mind appears. A new light appears. This is why a person who is willing to do something for others makes things right. That is what we are teaching. If we live in a different world, we will never live in this world. Then, we will have disorders and incapacities. What does God say? The next thing God says is sense mind. The next is mental capacity. Mental consciousness. In the past, we had a caution. What is it? The mind that is affected by the beings. We should not destroy it. The second is... The consciousness that is affected by the mind. That is why we have dualities. We have seen this. We have seen this. Whether we live in this world or not, we should make things right. The unity. What is the reason for living in this unity? We should be regulated. We should be regulated. That is the enlargement of our mental consciousness out of the experience of the egoistic dualities into an unregulated unity. If we do not regulate, we will have confusion. The person who is different from us is the mental consciousness. Everything happens in this world. We have to go to a higher consciousness. That is what we need to observe. Whether we live in this world or not, we should be regulated. Even if we try to live in this world, we should try to live in this world. If we are not in this world, what is the reason? We have problems. A confusion and incapacity for active life of humanity. In the established order of the world's relativities. We have seen this. The world is the first place. There is a gap between the two. What should we do? We should change our mind. We should change our mind. We will have confusion. What does God say? That is what the people who have learned their mind. They have changed their mind. What is the reason for doing this? They have a life basis. A thought basis. We... What is happening? We disturb. What should we do? We have a life. They have a thinking process. When they have a sudden idea, they have a sudden mind. When they have a sudden idea, they have a sudden mind. What is the reason? We disturb their existing life basis and existing thought basis. Even if they have a sudden idea, they have a sudden idea. Their existing beings, they have a sudden idea. What does God say? Because... New things are created. When we know the end of the world, what is the reason? They have problems. What does God say?
This no doubt is a root of the injunction imposed in the Gita on the man who has the knowledge not to disturb the life basis and thought basis of the ignorant. For impelled by his example but unable to comprehend the principle of his action, they would lose their own system of values without arriving at a higher foundation.
This is happening in all directions. When a village has a village, it is impulsive. If we impose it, it will disturb. It is happening in all villages, in families. What is it? We should harmonize it. It creates disorder and desire. That is what God says. What does God say? We should make our mind. We should not be regulated. It should be a regulated unity with a higher conscious, not an unregulated unity with a higher consciousness. If we do it, we will have problems. At all levels, we have to include the lower. That is what God says. When we go higher, the lower has to be included. When we go higher, the lower has to be included. That is what we need to observe. Because everything is continuous. Creation is a continuous process. There are different pictures. That is what we need to observe. But nothing is disconnected. When we reach the end of the road, we will try to make things right. Then, our progress will be imbalanced. We will not be able to lead an effective life. There is a confusion and a disorder in the established order. That is what God says. Some peaceful people are trying to learn this. This is what God says. They have tried to learn this. Some peaceful people are trying to learn this. Because they cannot do it in peaceful life. This disorder and incapacity. They know this. They have known this. But what does God say? What is the point of looking at this? We should not abandon anything. This is what we need to observe. Some people think that this is a mistake. They have tried to make things right. Some people think that it is a mistake. It is not our fault. What does God say? The right goal of human progress must be always an effective and synthetic reinterpretation. Effective. Synthetic is a lot. Reinterpretation. Do you know this? We should understand it correctly. Effective and synthetic. We cannot discard this. We should reinterpret it. An effective and synthetic reinterpretation by which the law of the wider existence may be represented in a new order of truths. We should understand this. And in a more just and present working of the faculties on the life material of the universe. What is the reason? We should not have a bad example. 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 Whether we live in this world or not, we should make things right. What does God say? The world... The... The sun is the sun. We have understood this. Then, we understand truth. But if we understand truth, we will have no problem. What should we do? We should observe the different things. We should observe the different things. If we do it, we will have no problem.
Its discovery would have been of little use if there were not a science that makes a new conception, the centre of a reasoned and ordered knowledge, putting the right values on the perception of the senses.
We have understood this. The sun is the sun. What should we do? We should make things right in this world. udasina paduthavadale sari sayikindrum adu than inga tevay abdingradh any new conception must be a part of a reasoned and ordered knowledge abdingradh rusa ona kandupadicham abdina adu vandhu it must be a part of the reasoned and ordered knowledge adu oringanake patha oru arivaa than arivinadippadai il than adu amikka padavendum abdingradh bhavan adheepola in the mukkivanga bhavan kooruvadhi ennamantral idu varikkenambo ondhu andu egovinadippadai la eppidi ninuthakondirikindrum anithi me nammay sutri yengavada than ninuthakondirikindrum avaru than over sarashari madhanam in the worldathil ninuthakondirikindran ellamey vandhu naam than naam than center enna sutti ellamey nadaybarikindradhuthu enr over madhanam ninuthakondirikindran adarku karanam ennamantral in the ego ego enral andu tan munaipe adhanal than ellavishayengalavandhu namba nammay sutri nammay mayyamaga vaituthu than ninuthakondirikindrum avaru than ennu kindrum majority of the people kadavulayim koda andu iravanim koda nammay mayyamaga vaituthu than andu poruthukindrum andu iravanin sailvaadukalim ebharu edebodikindram enral nammudaya virupu virupugalakkeetpadan andu iravanode sailvaadukalayim naam anumani kindrum in the bhavan inga enna koorikindra edu unmay enral kadavul than mayyamaga irundukondu aniththukum mayyamaga irundukondu sailpadikindra nambrade ego vandhu nambrade tanippatamaipegal andu divine adhisutthi than amayindarikindran in the unmayay vandhu oru manidha sariyaga purithukollavendum enral idu than unmay in the unmayay oruvar sariyaga purindukollavendum enral adu eppidu in the unmayay oruvar sariyaga purindukondam mudiyam divine is the center of our existence enbadhe purindukollamudiyam enral andu tanimanudan tanikkaadandhu oru uyirvana unarvinnalaki selumborudhu than idai in the unmayay purithukollavendum adheepola bhavan inga kooruvadhi ennamantral in the in the namrodaya arivu inbadhe oru uyir oru oru orungan oru orungupadutha pathulla oru nyanathin adippadai il namrodaya arivu sailpada vendum aththake arivin perilthan naam thappurudhu vaarvum andu vaarvum the ego vay saarndhvaarvul adhanal varangappadum madhipidukali naam sari sayavendam abdingradh
a reasoned and effective knowledge must correct the values of our egoistic life
idu than sayavendam enkindra in the in the knowledge venu abdingradh bhavan enna koorikindra nambo vandhu andu ego vay mayyamaga vaituthu sailpadikindrum adhanadippadai elas sela madhipidukali varangikindrum idellam ok oralavukka practicala sailpadumborudhu idu avasyamagathan irkindradhuthu anal idu vandhu oru sariyana oru anukumare kadeyad sariyana nyanam kadeyad edu karay sariyana nyanam enral iravan than mayyamaga irkindran divine cent divine centricaha iruppa sailpadikindradhuthu anithi me adu than unmay ahyal bhavan inga enna koorikindra in the ego vay saarndhirkum in the arivu inbadhe should be substituted by a divine centric knowledge abdingradh in the oru adippadi in the oru anyanathin adippadai il than nammudaya sailvaadukal amayavendam abdingradh adiyam vandhu bhavan enna koorikindra eppidi sayavendum adiyam manidhan oru orundhi sailpada vendum enr bhavan kooripadikindra idayam vandhu oru oru orungupadutha patha neelyil oru neripadutha patham murailthan idayam sayavendum adavudhu tan than thappurudhirkakodi ego vay saarndhirkum in the nyanaththai andu iravanin mayyamaga vaitthum sailpadum nyanathin monamaga idamatrum sayavendum adayam oru orungupadutha pathu oru nerimari padutha patham murailthan in the maatrathayim sayavendum abdingradh avaru sayavadil enna nadaybarame enral angaiyam oru pudiya oru tatva new philosophies new religions new revolutions ivaygal than eerpadavam abdingradh ahyal in the substitution substitution of egoistic knowledge by the divine centric knowledge idu um manidhan oru neripadutha murail oru orungupadutha murail oru orungupadutha patham murail than sayavendum abdingradh it can be done by only a recent and effective knowledge abdingradh appadha vandhu adu sariyamayam evriyae adayum sariyasa yalaya abdina oru pudiya madengalaithan namoruvakoom pudiya tatva amaipegalaithan uruvakoom ahyal bhavan enna koorikindra oru pudiya oru murai oru pudiya orungu adithaan eerpaduthanavam abdingradh oru new order andu new order lena nadaybaram eppidi nanay oru eppidi naday eppidi amayam enral thappurudhu ego vay saarndhulla vaarvul inbadhe oru devi ka vaarvaga angka marum adu eppidi antal oru new order appan the new order vandhu sariyana oru aran nyanathin adippadai il amikka padavendam abdingradh sariyana nyanathin parapadigandral bhavan inga kooripaduvadhi ennamantral sadhana oru manamsartha arivai arivinadippadai il amikka padamal manadhi kadaandha andu adhimanam supramental andu adippadai il amayumborudhu than in the in the in the substitution inbadhe sariyagam anadaybarum andu karuthi than inga bhavan kooripadikindra paragraph of four and five the karuthakal paragraph six lane nambo pohalam
chapter seven the ego and the dualities paragraph six third new life and power of the human integer must necessarily repose on a realization of the great verities which translate into our mode of conceiving things the nature of the divine existence it must proceed through a renunciation by the ego of its false standpoint and false certainties certainties through its entry into a right relation and harmony with the totalities of which it forms a path and with the transcendences from which it is a descent and through its perfect self opening to a truth and a law that exceed its own conventions a truth that shall be its fulfillment and a law that shall be its deliverance its goal must be the abolition of those values which are the creations of the egoistic view of things its crown must be the transcendence of limitation ignorance death suffering and evil thank you sir
thank you explanation yeah please
explanation the new life shall transcend limitations ignorance death suffering and evil Srivinder ended the previous paragraph with a statement that the basis of the divine life should be founded on a new order of truths the new life that is which is our goal and humanity as a whole must be based on higher principles of truth we talk of divine life but we do not really know the basis of truths on which it is founded the new order of truths will help the man to understand the reality behind the higher existence what is the nature of our ego it sees division where there is unity it asserts something as right but in reality it is not true as a first step towards new life the ego must be cured of its defects what should be the character of the new life we talk of Srivinder says the individual life should have a right relation and be in harmony with the collective life that is totality because it is only a part of the totality it will realize the oneness at all levels we have seen in the earlier chapter that the divine manifests itself through successive descents through the universe and the individual the new life should also be in harmony with this transcend from which it came the next step is the new life should open itself to a truth and law that are superior to the existing standards such a truth will lead to its fulfillment that is body mind and life to realize the full potential such a law a divine law that frees life from all its limitations the new life will completely get rid of egoistic values Srivinder says the ultimate achievement of the new life would be it will no longer be restrained by its limitations life will be based on knowledge rather than on ignorance death will no longer be a necessity suffering and evil will disappear thank you sir
thank you bhavan inga kooruvadhi new life abdingradh bhavan oru new life abdingradh oru pudiya vaarvul pudiya vaarvul enr bhavan kooripadikindra the pudiya vaarvul enr bhavan kooripaduvadhi ennamantral it is a divine life divine life vandhu edu mayyamaga irkum enral divine than mayyamaga irukum adu than divine life naam thappurudhu vaarakkodiya vaarvul inbadhe ordinary life vaadikindrum idai edu idhil edu mayyamaga irkindradhuthi enral andu tan munaipe ego adu than mayyamaga irkindra idu than vityasam the divine life vikko naam vaarakkodiya sadhana vaadkekkum enna vityasam enral ippo namva vaarakkodiya vaadke vandhu nammay sutri amayikindrum the ego than inga mayyamaga irkindradhuthu divine life then divine mayyamaga irukum adu than that is a difference the ego vay sutti amayindadhanal than vandhu the dualities nambo parkrom ego vay sutti amayindarupadhanal naam madhipidukali varangikindrum adhal madhipidukali ellamey thavarana thavaraha varangappadikindran abdingradh problem vandhu idu vandhu adippadai karanam manidhan k manidhan edhirkolla kodiya prachinigalakka vaarvut vaarvirkka adippadai karanam vandhu avangode vaarvul the ego vay sutri amayindarupadhanal than enr bhavan kooripadikindra Surjaya ji can you please switch off your mic there is mangai can you please switch off his mic in the pudiya vaarvul inbadhe edan adippadai il irkum na the higher principles of truth abdingradh the higher principles of truth abdingradh abdingradh vandhu pathavam enral edumey angavandhu ellamey vandhu andu ego vay saarndhvaarvukum madhipidukalala amayindarukadhu it should be it is based on some other principle than the mental consciousness in the ego vay saarndhirkum in the vaarvula edu meelongi kana padikindradhuthi enral the division division kukaaranamey the ego than enr bhavan kooripadikindra but andu division than vandhu anithirkamey karanamaga irkiddhu the division vandhu macro level la irdhalam sari macro level la country school division between different countries number divisiona parkindrum oru country neduthukotale peevare amaipegalirikindran adhal naraya divisions parkrom tanimanudan neduthukondale oru tanima oru manidhanakum inor manidhanakum idale division parkindrum inge kalprit enna abdina andu division than andhral than vandhu the problem nambo nambo parkindrum in the division to unity than vandhu worldathal parkakodi ellapraoblatukon solution enna abdina division to unity than disharmony to harmony than idanar than bhavan first chapter le bhavan koorina all problems of life are problems of harmony the harmony konuduthu abdina the problem solve ayadunkaradhan adippadai unmay in the division yen varikindradhuthi enral because we are the we have lost the sense of oneness adippadale edu unmay enral we are one with other if there are two or three human beings basis a basicla patham enral we are one in the oneness vandhu since andu andu sense of oneness illada naal than we are ignorant we are ignorant of oneness andhanal than illa problem oru tha abdingradh bhavan ahyal first step enna sayinobdina bhavan the ego must be cured of its defects abdingradh first step vandhu ego must be cure of its defects idai vandhu annai annai vandhu remba firmaga koorikindarkal in the spiritual person in the spiritual transformation idellam nadakno abdina first adippadai necessity enna abdina complete on the ego vandhu nambo muttilumaga one should remove his ego one should absolve his ego idan annai koorikindarkal it is a pro idu vandhu kastham abdinganam mother mother enna soranam the consciousness vandhu oru individuala sailpaduvadhi inbadhu oru karanathirka amikka padulladhu that is amikka padullu nature it is a process of nature eyerkayin sailvaatin karanamaga var amikka padulladhu over tanimanudanam oru tanippatta oru manidhanaga irkindran adhan monamaga the aarvam uttrum munnayarikindran idarkallam vandhu the individualization of consciousness enbadhe athyaavasyamaga irkindradhuthu anal oru kaalakattathir kapron the ego vandhu oru thadayaga irkindradhuthu idai muttilumaga oru madhan tannilayirundu andu ego vay agathruvadhi inbadhe kadina abdikinram mother adhal than nobody can say that I am egoless amar solamudiyadha abdingradh you can say that I am in the I am in the path in removing my ego the ego vay naam muttilumaga thuttavadarkana pathaiil naam selikindran andu solalayam evriyae ego vay naam muttilumaga ennilirundu vilakki vittainenr yaraalum kooramudiyadha abdinganam enna karanathinala annai avaar koorikindarkal enral as long as you are a separate person you are a separate entity apdengra oru unarvinnalai irkara varikku ni vandhu ego irukkana arttham abdingradh ego na andu garvumaga sailpaduvadhi enr arttham kadeyad as long as you feel you are a separate person apdina nenanda andu idu nenekkara varikku unakka ego irukku abdina abdina arttham abdingradh it is difficult abdingradh adu that is impossible only unless one grows in the consciousness psychic consciousness realizing the self within the realizing the self without we are in the same that is the realization then becoming one with others that is complete ego is a fruit that is the way to ego is if we want to eat this is a problem this is the Lord's question that is why Bhagwan is asking the new life if anything is completely ego is the one the new life what is happening is the next oneness at all levels there will be oneness at all levels why oneness at all Bhagwan question when man has the mind goes to the world because here man has naturally he is man has the mind completely he is not ego he becomes one with the universal consciousness but yet he maintains it into individuality that is not the case Bhagwan is asking that is the one life everything is that is the one that is the one the new life should be in harmony with this transcendent from which it came that is the one that is why Bhagwan question that is the new life what is the next the mind mind the next one that is the next Bhagwan is not asking whether Bhagwan is that is what is the question Bhagwan? a truth that shall be its fulfillment and a law that shall be its deliverance the new life if anything is a new one in the new one everything is a fruit a truth that should be its fulfillment in that place man is food fulfilled and a law that shall be its deliverance whatever whatever the next whatever is the fruit if it is whatever in that place the food whatever ego is the one that is the one its goal must be the abolition of those values which are the creations of the egoistic view of things whatever that ego is living is 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 in that place everything is abolished a fruit its crown must be the transcendence of limitation, ignorance, death, suffering and evil the divine life the mind the super mind that is the next how is it made? now we want to live what is it? a limitation a limitation is the limitation is that is the desire that is why Bhagwan is telling why is the desire? we are limited so we have we have but we are the limitation is the reason limitation is ignorance is death is suffering is evil is that is why Bhagwan question not know because we are full knowledge not know because we are we are we are we are but when there is collective consciousness in that place suffering and evil is not because suffering and evil what is happening? that is why Bhagwan is asking suffering and evil in my mind I saw that is what I am thinking why suffering and evil is happening? that is suffering and evil that is thoughts what is we are thinking? they are in my mind I saw that is the suffering and evil I am thinking the moment I become one with everything I am not suffering and evil this is what is happening? the mind the egoistic consciousness this is goes to the world that is why Bhagwan is asking we have the change of consciousness in the world system-based we have whatever is made that is man has problems a narrow mind whatever is is that is a political mind not a a ideal that is a system that is is a mind but that is a tree the communist powers in that time communist powers was a very in that time Bhagwan is asking the communist governments all collapse is because this is a narrow man has is now that is that is in the history whatever is man has problems solution is impossible that is why Bhagwan is asking unless there is a change of consciousness human civilization man has problems is
paragraph seven the transcendence the abolition are not possible here on earth and in our human life if the terms of that life are necessarily bound to our present egoistic valuations if life is in its nature individual phenomenon and not representation of a universal existence and the breathing of a mighty life spirit if the dualities which are the response of the individual to its contacts are not merely a response but the very essence and conditions of all living if limitation is the inalienable nature of the substance of which our mind and body are formed disintegration of death the first and last condition of all life its end and its beginning pleasure and pain the inseparable dual stuff of all sensation joy and grief the necessary light and shade of all emotion truth and error the two poles between which all knowledge must eternally move then transcendence is only attainable by the abandonment of human life in nirvana beyond all existence or by attainment to another world a heaven quite otherwise constituted than this material universe
thank you explanation what is it? explaining
the present dualities of the world are not the permanent features the goals we hope to realize in the new life transcending that is exceeding our limitations ignorance, death, suffering and evil are not possible on earth as long as our life is based on values founded on ego what are our perceptions about this worldly life? we think life is individual oriented we do not feel we are a part of collective universal life we do not feel our life is the outcome of a larger life spirit Shakti one minute please sir we are under the we are under the impression that the dualities we come across pleasure and pain, evil and good etcetera are the very basic nature of our life we do not realize that they are our mere responses to those contacts we accept that limitation is the fundamental nature of our body and mind we believe that death is the beginning and the end of our life we think that pleasure and pain are inseparable joy and grief are two sides of our emotion knowledge as something caught between truth and error based on the above conception of life we proceed to think that the solution cannot be found on earth sir, I am asking
yes, sir
okay sir perhaps it lies elsewhere in a distant heaven human life must be abandoned if man must go beyond the dualities of joy and suffering he must reach a state of nirvana if we take all the above limitations as irreversible conditions of life then the ascetic standoff rejection of life is justified. Thank you sir.
thank you in the she or a window how in the world other people are is are what is the difference? the world world is here is thoughts words love thoughts are not not we are not so we have the dualities accept now is if there is solution is if there is very is that is the Bhagwan's other people in the world traditional spirituality they are the world is not we have we are in the world we are that is presence two parts are the world world is what is it? they are like dogs we cannot now is they are forever is the mind is but Bhagwan is Bhagwan is is a big sentence in the sentence many questions how to in the sentence a long sentence Bhagwan is asking this is not? this is not? this is not? he says but it is not that is the truth this is this is we are not is not not that is in the world in the world is is not we have is but it is not that is the truth Bhagwan is asking we have Bhagwan is asking in the living everything is this is egoistic everything is ego ego we are in the next living is this is we have a a practical tip we have how practical how to use Bhagwan is asking two persons two persons one person is two persons are one person is we have many questions one person is is another person is is this is whatever is this is all questions some some one person is is what is the meaning? the judgments everything is every person every person is the judgment the question it is a very absolute value truth is not every person is the living is is that is what is the reason? that is the person is that ego is ego ego that ego that is the reason that is the reason what is the possibility? that is we are in the world we are practically life many questions some persons behavior a a a a not a family some 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 their problems the problem is how is that is we are because that is the problem is that is the ego that is that is why Bhagwan is asking we have living everything is there is There is no sanctity behind it. We think we are doing well, we are judging. We think so. But there is no sanctity behind it. All our judgments are prone to the prone error. What is the practical tip? We cannot judge anyone who has grasses. That is why they are scared, they are afraid. Because this is the problem. That is why Allah is complaining. What is Allah saying? In the we see this. Basic nature of life is not there. We can see the things. Pleasure and pain, evil and good, this is the basic nature of life. What is it? Why is the nature of life not there? What is the reason? We are talking about the future. Our response to the thunder. That is why the grasses are damaged. They are only mere responses to the contacts. By themselves, they are not bad, they are not evil, they are not good. Pain is not there, pressure is not there. But if we give them a response, that is why we are talking about it. For example, if something happens, some people like it. If they like it, they like it. We see all these. For example, some music, some people like it. Other music, people don't like it. If we say that music is good, it is not. Because the values assigned by the individual. That is why Allah is complaining. What is Allah saying? All of us, to the saints, we give some responses. They are giving advice. That is why the grasses are damaged. This is a practical life. It is a valuable tip. We do not know what is going to happen. How do we react? That is why we are doing this. We are doing this because we are doing this. That is why we are doing this. That is why we are doing this. What is Allah saying? We are eating the food, we are eating the food. What is the truth? We have a desire for the food, we have a desire for the food. Is it true that we have a desire for the food, we have a desire for the food? That is why we are doing this. Some people see. They are young. They are in a good age. They are active. Now in western countries, I have experienced many experiences. To go to supermarkets, buy stuff. They came alone, bought a lot of stuff. They drove their car, they drove their car. We ask why they are like this. Above eighty, that is 60, 60 to eighty, they are not like this. Eighty-five, most people see them all, drive their car, sell their goods, sell their goods alone. What is it? The age, body limitation, we are doing this. It is the desire of us. Let us see how many people have a good life. They are not good. That is why Allah is complaining. Death, we think death is the beginning and the end of life. If we think death is the beginning and the end of life, then the civilization has not arrived. A single man is living, is dying, is alive. But the single man, the single man's soul is still in the path of the thunder. Is it? The single man's soul, we see. How many thousands of people are still alive? The single man's soul is not alive. So, whether it is life or death, what is Allah saying? It is the end of life. There is no such thing. Allah has said in another chapter. Death is a process of life. Death is a continuation of life. Death is not the end of life. Death is a process of life. Death is a process by which life renews itself. This is why Allah is talking about death. Death is a process by which life renews itself. The memory of the past, the memory of the past, the memory of the past. The memory of the past is what we see. This is all, our perception is wrong. Like this, pleasure and pain cannot be changed. That is also wrong. Why cannot be changed? If pleasure and pain were there, if happiness was there, the future would come. But happiness is not enough. Bliss is enough. If there is a sentiment, pleasure and pain, it is all lost. That is why joy and grief. Like this, jnana is what we think. Jnana is not a fixed jnana. Sometimes it is a big problem. What is Allah saying? This is not a fixed conception. This is not a fixed conception. It is wrong. This is the final truth. We cannot achieve a better life in the world. If we think this is the truth, then we think, okay, as long as we are in the world, we cannot find a solution. We cannot talk about it. The future truth is somewhere in heaven, somewhere in a state of nirvana liberation. We do not have a world. So, we cannot find the truth in the world. This is not possible. Allah has said this. In the evolutionary process, we have a dualities. It is a temporary phase. They are not permanent features. You can go beyond it. Permanent features are not. Then we will go to the future. We cannot find a solution in the world. Then we have to make the world. We will go to other places. We need to talk about the future. We will go to a certain place. Let us go to the next one. Let us talk about the next one. Let us talk about the next one. Let us go to paragraph eight. The limitations are very much related to Allah. What is Allah saying? The aging process, one should not be conscious of one's age. What is Allah saying? I know a little of the old years. I know a little of the old years. What is Allah saying? Do not be conscious of your age. If we are conscious of our age, we have limitations. We need to go to the future. This is what Nalini Kanta Gupta's son, eight years old. The son, his mother says, why I do not want this? Actually, I was thinking of changing this. Because of this, I wanted to bring you the old years. Then you will begin to think that you are old. I was thinking of changing this. The son, the son, the son. Allah has said, I do not want this. I do not want this. I do not want this. This is an example. When I was 80, I was playing tennis. I was very active when I was 90 years old. So, this is an example.
Sir, excuse me, sir.
Say, madam.
The death, you have said, Allah is saying.
I am studying, madam, please.
Book two, page number one hundred and ninety-four, chapter six. Allah is saying, our death is made a passage to new worlds.
Yes, yes.
At the end of the page, number two hundred and one, Allah is saying, birth and death are ceaseless iterations points. The old question marks, margins each finish the page. Each volume of her efforts history, limping is through the aeons journey still accompanied by an eternal no. Actually, I will thank Allah. Life has no issue, death brings no release. Thank you, sir.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, madam, thank you.
Sir, the mother also said, we should not judge.
That is what I am saying. Many said judging. Judging people are all. If the man is wrong, we judge people. That is wrong. Judging is wrong unless Allah is saying, unless your consciousness is one with the divine consciousness. You do not judge. Otherwise, you should be in a different mood. If you are, judge. In other situations, we should judge. Higher level of consciousness. When you are there, you should judge. When you are in the same mood, what right have you to judge others? The mother is very nice. Judging people is very, very wrong. For example, their mother says, in this on the day of the birthday, on August fifteenth birthday, the mother celebrates the birthday. In that time, Allah is there. He is there. He is there in the church. That is where a monk is sitting. The monk is praying to Allah. On August fifteenth birthday, I saw Allah. She is complaining. The mother is saying, yes. Allah is saying. About the girl, everyone has a different opinion. Very, what to say? She was a rebellious character. Normal judgment, normal judgment. The girl is not used. A girl who is not used. Such a wrong opinion is given to others. The girl knows the truth. What is Allah saying? All the judgments are wrong. Who judges? Better not to judge anybody. Better not to judge anybody. First of all, it is wrong. It will prevent a lot of misunderstanding. We should not change the mind. We should not change the mind.
Thank you, sir.
Paragraph eight. Paragraph eight. It is not very easy for the customary mind of man, always attached to its past and present associations, to conceive of an existence still human, yet radically changed in what are now our fixed circumstances. We are in respect to our possible higher evolution, much in the position of the original ape of the Darwinian theory. It would have been impossible for the ape, leading his instinctive, aboriginal life in primeval forest, to conceive that there would be one day an animal on the earth would use a new faculty called reason upon the materials of his inner and outer existence, who would dominate by that power his instincts and habits, change the circumstances of his physical life, build for himself houses of stone, manipulate nature's forces, sail the seas, ride the air, develop codes of conduct, evolve conscious methods for his mental and spiritual development. And if such a conception had been possible for the ape mind, it would still have been difficult for him to imagine that by any progress of nature or long effort of will and tendency, he himself could develop into that animal.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, buddy.
What do you think?
Studying, sir.
Thank you. Man in his present evolutionary status is much like the ape.
I am studying, please. I am studying.
Okay, sir, thank you, sir. Man in his present evolutionary status is much like the ape who preceded him. We have seen in the previous paragraph that man living in this world is unable to conceive a higher life other than his present one of the dualities. Sri Aravind says, this is due to his incapacity. Man is conditioned by his past and present. He is unable to conceive anything other than the fixed circumstances he is accustomed to. We are aware of the Darwinian theory of evolution, that ape preceded man. The life of ape is based on animal instincts, not on reason like human. the life of ape is based on animal instincts not on reason like human beings its life has been restricted to the trees in the forest since age old times naturally the ape could not have had the capacity to think that a superior creature like human beings would appear on the earth it could not have thought that man would use reason as a tool to conquer the nature around him and bring about all the modern inventions to facilitate his life evolve conscious methods for his mental and spiritual development even assuming that the ape could have had the capacity to foresee the appearance of man till it would not have imagined that it had the capacity to evolve into a human being shri aravindos says that man in his present evolutionary status is much like the ape that preceded him
इद रुम्बा रुम्बा इंपॉर्टेंट मुख्यमान करत भगवान कोरुवत रुम्बा ओ यम सुप्रा मेंटल कॉन्शियसनेस सुप्रा मेंटल लाइफ डिवाइन लाइफ इदला कुर्तन पढिकिंड्रोम भगवानुम अन्युम नाम अवर्गल वडिल वंदुल्लोम अदलाल अवर्गल कोरुम अवर्गल कोरु अवर्गलुडे सरकलिन मेल नमक ओर परिपोरन नंबिके इर्किंद्रदु अदल एलालवु नाम संधिप्पतिले अदलाल अप्पडे एट्रकोल्किंड्रो इच्छियमाग द डिवाइन लाइफ एन्न अमय पोइंद्रदु मनिदन एन्बवन अधिमान अधिमानस पिरविय एट्टा पोइंदान एन्न पदिल्लाम नाम पूरणमाग नंबु हिंड्रो एन्नाल भगवान कोरियुल्लार अन्य कोरियुल्लार्कल इरय इरयवनुडे इरय अवधारंगला अवर्गल कोरियुल्ला अंद सरकले नम्मा वंदे एलालवु नाम अदिल नाम ऐयम उर्वदिल्ल अनाल ओर सरासरी मनिदन एडुत्तु कुंडाल इत्तकिय करत्तुकले मनिदन एट्रकोल्लमाटा अदलाल दान अवर्गल एन्न कोरिंदार्कल इद ओलगम एन्न पदित तारको इदर मात्तवे मुड़यादु एप्पडे नायवालन नमालन नम्मत्तम मुड़यादु नेराहा सय सय मुड़यादु अदे पोलदान द मनिदनुडे वार्वे एन्न पदित तारको मात्तवे मुड़यादु इद काढंद सल्ला मुड़यवे मुड़यादु एन्न पदित ओर सरासरी मनिदन नुडे ओर वलवान ओर एन्नमाग इर्किंद्रदु अप्पडे एन्नाल इद सात्यमा इल्लिया एन्नाल भगवान इन एन्न कोरिंदार इद कोण ओर उदारन सुर्डर भगवान रुम्बा beautiful explanation ओ इद वंदे मनिदन के इदक अडिपडेल मनिदन यदरका एन्न कारणत्नाल अव्वार एन्न हिंदान एन्नाल अद अनुडे incapacity एन्नाल मुड़ीले ओडने एन्नाल मुड़ीले एंग्र ओरे कारणत्तकान एन्न कोरिंदान इद मुड़यवे मुड़यादु एन्न नान एन्न हिंद इद एन्नुडे incapacity अदे पोल एनुडे कडंदहालम एनुडे कडंदहालत्नाल नान उर्वाकपट्टे इर्किंद्रे I am conditioned by my past and the present एनुडे कडंदहालम एनुडे निगरहालम इवेगलीनाल नान उर्वाकपट्टे इर्किंद्रे अदलाल इत्तकिय ओर कोरिप्पिट्टा सूर्णलेगल माराद सूर्णलेगल इदरकतान नान परकपट्टुले इद इद इवेगले तांडीयनाल वंदे एदीम संदेश वाकमुड़ील इद दान मनिदन तप्पोर्जिरक्क कुड़िय निलै इद नाम मनिवर्मी एट्रकोल्किंड्रो इद उन्मय दान एन्न पर नम्मा पातो darwinian darwinian theory ले darwinian theory of evolution ले एन्ना पार्किंड्रो द मनिद कोरंग अद दान मनिदनक मुन्नालुल्ला ओर ah जीवरास एन्न पदित पार्किंड्रो द ape preceded man एन्न पदित पार्किंड्रो मनिद कोरंग एव्वार वार्जिंद्रदु एन्न पदियम भगवान वरिकिंद अद एप्पडे मरत्तल ताविकिंद्रदु अव्वलदान मरत्तल ताविकुंड तावर ah इनंग तावर ओर काटल वार्जंदु कुंडे इर्किंद्रदु ah अदरक वंदे तन्नेवीडा ओर उयर्न्द जीवरास याना मनिदन इंद ओलहिरी इंद बूमेरी तोन्रवान एन्न निच्छियमाग एन्नुवदरकु अदरक तिरमय कड़यादु ओर मनिद कोरंगिरक तन्नेवीडा ओर उयर्वान नेले लुल्ला मनिदन एन्बवन इंद बूमेरी तोनरपोइंदान एन्गिन्र ओर एन्नु तिरन मनिद कोरंगिरक कड़यादु मनिदन तरपोर्जिय एव्वार इर्किंदान तनुडे अरिवय उपयोगित्तु कुंड अवन एयरक्याय आलुकिंदान एयरक्याय तन वसम पैथुल्लाम इल्लाविदमान नवीन कंडिपडिपगलिन मौलमाग तनुडे वार्के अवन अमैथ्तिकोल्किंदान अदनुडे उदविवलुडन तनुडे वार्के नट्ठिंदान तनुडे मनिदनुडे वालेचिकुम तनुडे आन्मिनुड़ड़िय वालेचिकुम मनिदन सैलबडिंदान इंद इव्वारल्लाम उल्ला मनिदन मनिदन एन्बवन इंद बूमेरी तोन्रवान एन्न पदित ओर मनिद कोरंग सच्रुम निनतिरिक्कवे मुड़यादु इद भगवान कोरकुड़िय करत भगवान मेल ओर करती में वेयर ओर करतीम कोरिंदार अव्वार ओर काल निनक्कुम अंद सक्ति अंद मनिद कोरंगिरक इर्न्दिरिंदालुम कोड तान अव्वार अव्वार अव्वारान ओर निलैक्य उयरक्कोडम एन्न पदित सच्रुम निनतिरिक्कमुड़यादु यान मनिद कोरंगलुडे evolution नडी evolution मौलमाग तान नम्मा मनिदन अदिल तोनरिल्लाम इट मनिद एन्बवन एंगिरंदा वरल अंद मनिद कोरंगली इर्न्दु दान मनिदन मनिदन तोनरिल्लाम खेल भगवान इन एन्न कोरिंदार मनिदन एन्बवन तोन्रवान एन्गिन्र एन्न द बूमेरी अवदरिपान एन्गिन्र मनिदन एन्गिन्र ओर एन्न द बूमेरी तोनरम एन्गिन्र ओर सिंधन ओर काल अंद मनिद कोरंगिरक येयरपट्टालुम कोड तान तन्निल इर्न्द उर्वाहम अमैपाग मनिदन तोन्रवान एन्गिन्र एन्न र सच्रुम कुड़ादनाल अदरान निनतिरिक्कमुड़यादु एन्न भगवान कोरिप्पिटिकिंद अदे पोलदान मनिदन तरपोर्जु उल्ले नेले यूम एरिकिंद्रदु तन्निल इर्न्द ओर अधिमानिदन तोन्रवान एन्गिन्र उन्मय मनिदन अरिया मरुकिंदान एन्न भगवान कोरिप्पिटिकिंद रुम्बा 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 beautiful analysis इद दान उन्मय एन्न भगवान कोरिप्पिटिकिंद यान मनिद कोरंगिरक अप्पो तेरिंदरिक वायपुल्ल अदे पोलदान नी इर्कर अब्दिंगदार इच्छियमाग ओर मनिदन ओर नम्मा इविड ओर एल्ला विदियत्तलुम उयर्न्द ओर अमैपु तोनरम एन्न पदित मनिद मनम नम्मा मरुकिंद्रदु अब्दिंगदार भगवान रुम्बा ओर वलवान करत्ते इनको कोरिप्पिटिकिंद यानेन्राल अडिपडेल नम्मा एन्न अदे उनरवेन्डमेन्राल the scientific darwinian theory of evolution एन्न पदित evolution of forms वडिवंगल इनुडे ये evolution अलुओ millions of years इम्मौलमा वंदत तोनरिया अंद evolution process ले वडिवंगल वेवेर नेले ले तोन्डिंदन एन्न पदित अवर्गल scientific ए विलेक्युल्लार्कल भगवान एन्न कोरिंदार द वडिवंगल वडिवंगल इनुडे ये अंद परिणाम वालेची एन्न पदित पुरत्तिल दान उन्मय ले यदि परिणाम वालेची एडु तन्न एडुपड़त एडुपड़ती कोण्डुल्लदु एन्नाल it is a unarvane नेले it is an evolution of consciousness अद दान उन्मय एन्न भगवान कोरिप्पिटिंद अद दान वित्यास भगवान इनुडे evolution को evolution रिको अंद darwinian theory को वित्यास दान darwinian theory ले scientific वंदे दे आर टॉकिंग अबाउट evolution of forms पुरवडिवंगल इनुडे ये परिणाम वालेची पट्टु दान अवर्गल कोरिंदार अनाल भगवान शिया रविंदर दान मुदलमुदलाग बेसियुल्लार अदपत्ति evolution of consciousness अब्दिंगदु पत्ति बेसियुल्लार एप्पडे इद कॉन्शियसनेस वंदे उल्ले एयरकनवे इन्वॉल्व आयरक इन्वॉल्वान अन कॉन्शियसनेस पडिपडियाग तन्न वेलिपड़ती कोल्किंद्रदु एन्न पदित भगवान वंदे कॉन्शियसनेस एन्गिन्र अडिपडेली पेसियुल्लार of course मत्त spiritual literature ले कानपडिकिंद्रदु अनाल specifica वंदे दे इस रेवल्यूशन ऑफ कॉन्शियसनेस एन्न पदित कोरित्तु बेसियुल्लदु भगवान दान इंद कांसेप्ट भगवान इनुडे एर्थिकली दान कानपडिकिंद अडुत्त पोलन
man because he has acquired reason and still more because he has indulged his power of imagination and intuition he is able to conceive an existence higher than his own and even to envisage his personal elevation beyond his present state into that existence his idea of the supreme state is an absolute of all that is positive to his own concepts and desirable to his own instinctive aspiration knowledge without its negative shadow of error bliss without its negation in experience of suffering power without its constant denial by incapacity purity and plenitude of being without the opposing sense of defect and limitation it is so that he conceals his gods it is so that he constructs his heavens
thank you sir thank you explanation पढिंग
पड़िकित मस्त
पढिंग मैडम
man by his imagination and intuition can conceive an existence higher than his own but man unlike ape is gifted with reason he has the capacity for imagination and intuition with this he is able to conceive of a higher life foresee his elevation to a higher state of existence what are his personal ideals he aspires for in the higher status whatever he conceives as positive in his life he wants to reach the absolute that is meaning not dependent on anything else existing on its own right not diminished by relativity they are knowledge without error bliss without suffering power not limited by incapacity purity without defect abundance without limitation in his aspiration to reach the above absolute he conceives of god and heaven a superior status to his present one thank you sir
thank you thank you madam अनाल मनिदन तनक मुंदे जीवरास याना अंद मनिद कोरंग एन्न नेले लुल्लदो अंद नेले ले दान मनिदन तरपोर्जिरक्क इर्किंदान एन्न नाम पार्को अनाल भगवान इनको ओर ah आरुदल लड़िक्क कुड़िय विषयते कोरिकितर एन्न कोरिंदार मनिदनक वंदे एद वार्जंकपट्टुल्लद एन्नाल अंद कर्पण सय्यम तिरन power of intuition इदला वार्जंकपट्टुल्ल इद वंदे मनिद कोरंग कड़यादु एप को वंदे इमेजिनेशन कड़यादु intuition कड़यादु बट मनिदनक अंद कैपेसिटी इर्क द कैपेसिटी इर्करदुनाल नम्मा वंदे ओर उयर्वाव्व इर्किंद्रदु एन्न पदित नम्मा कर्पण से द पार्कमुडिकिंद्रदु नाम इद इविड ओर उयर्वान नेले ले इर्क इर्कमुड़युम एन्न पदित नाम कर्पण से द पार्क पार्कमुडिकिंद इप्पे इद भगवान इनुडे एर्थिकले पढिकुंड नम्मा मनिदले ले कर्पण से द पार्किंद्रो द super mind super man इदला एप्पडे एप्पडे इर्कमुड़यो बिंगदु नम्मा वंदे ओर मनदाले ले कर्पण से द पार्कमुडियु इंद तिरमय वंदे ए मनिद कोरंग कड़यादु अनाल मनिदनक इद तिरमय उड अदलाल एन्न से इन्रो नम्मा द अस्पेर पण्रो अस्पेरेशन इर्कदुनाल दान नम्मा वंदे इमेजिनेशन पण्रो ah अंद intuition intuition मनिदन तेरिकिंद्रदु इदन इदन अडिपडेल इदलाम इदन अडिपडेल अमैकिंदन एन्न एन्नाल मनिदनक के इर्क कुड़िय ओर विशेषमान ओर ah सक्ति ओर अम्सम एन्नवेन्राल नाम एप्पडे मे आरुम ओट्रे इर्किंद्रो अद दान उन्मय अद दान वंदे ओर पिरिया ओर ओर गिफ्ट मनिदनक वार्जंकपट्टुल्ल ओर माबिरुम कोड விலங்குகள் எடுத்துக்கொண்டாம் என்றால் aspirations aspirate பண்ணுகின்றதா என்றால் இருக்கலாம். அனால் மனிதனை போன்றால் அல்ல. அன்னை என்ன கூறுகின்றார்கள்? எதையேமே நம்ப டிஸ்கார்ட் பண்ண முடியாது. I have seen even cats doing yoga அப்படிங்கினாங்க. I have seen even cats doing yoga. இங்க பூனைகள் கூட யோகாசாதனில் இடுபடுவதே நான் காண்கின்றேன். அகேலா நீ எதையேமே வந்து நீ வந்து உதாசின படுத்த முடியாது அப்படிங்கினாங்க. இவ்விங்கதான் யோகம் செய்றார்கள், இவ்வில்லாதான் யோகம் செய்வது என்று நீ யாரேமே வந்து பாக்படுத்த முடியாது என்று அன்னை கூறுகின்றார்கள். அகேலா aspiration வந்து மனிதர்களுக்கு அதிகமா இருக்கின்றது என்பதே ஏற்றுக்கொள்ள வேண்டும். மற்ற ஜீவராசியரைவிட மனிதன் இருந்து நிலையில் we find that intense aspiration இருக்கின்றது. The aspiration இருக்குதனாலதான் மனிதன் என்ன செய்கின்றான்? தான் தற்போழுதிருக்கிற வாழ்வை விட ஒரு உயர்வாழ்வை மனிதன் வாழ முடியும் என்று எண்ணுகின்றான். தான் வாழ்வில் சந்திக்கக்கொடிய விஷயவங்களினோடு ஒவ்வொரு விஷய, ஒவ்வொரு அம்சத்தில் அம்சத்தி அம்சத்திலும் அவன் அதனுடைய உச்சக்கட்ட நிலையை எட்ட விரும்பிகின்றான். தான் வாழ்வில் சந்திக்கக்கொடிய ஒவ்வொரு அம்சத்திலும் அவன் எதை எட்ட விரும்பிகின்றான் என்றால் ஒரு உச்சக்கட்ட நிலை எட்ட விரும்பிகின்றான். உச்சக்கட்ட நிலை என்றால் என்ன என்றால் பிரிய இல்லாத ஞானம், பிரிக்குட்படாத ஞானம். The knowledge without error. இதெல்லாம் எல்லா மனிதர்களே நம் விரும்பிகின்றோம். அதே போல we want to have bliss without suffering. ஆனந்தம், தும்பமே தும்பமே துன்பத்தின் சாயிலே இல்லாத ஆனந்தத்தை விரும்பிகின்றோம். அதே போல the power without any limitations. நம்மக்கு வந்து லிமிடேஷன் இருக்கக்கூடாது. எதைச் சாதிக்க வேண்டுமோ என்னைக்கின்றோமா அதைச் சாதிக்க வேண்டும். எதுமும் தடங்கலா இருக்கக்கூடாது என்று நான் நினைக்கின்றோம். அதே போல ஒரு பரிசுத்தமாக நம்ம இருக்க வேண்டும் என்று நினைக்கின்றோம். Furity without defect. இதை எண்ணுகின்றோம். அதே போல we want abundance. எல்லாத்திலும் ஒரு செழுமியை செழுமியை விரும்பிகின்றோம். அங்க ஒரு பட்டராக்குறை விரும்புது விரும்புது இல்ல. Abundance without limitation. இதெல்லாமே மனிதன் வந்து விரும்பிகின்றான். இது மனிதனுக்கு வழங்கப்பட்டுள்ள ஒரு கொடை. இந்த இதை இதை எந்த அம்சங்களின் மனிதன் காணுகின்றான்? இந்த absolute வந்து எந்த அம்சங்களின் மூலமாக மனிதன் காணுகின்றான்? அந்த இரேவன் என்கின்ற அம்சத்தின் மூலமாகவும் இந்த பூமிக்கு மேறுள்ள ஒரு அமைப்பு heaven என்று கூறுகின்றோம். இது அந்த அமைப்பு இதெல்லாம் வந்து இதெல்லாம் சிம்போலிக்கா மனிதன் நினைக்கின்றான். இதெல்லாம் வந்து இந்த உயர்வான அம்சங்களை உடையது என்று மனிதன் அவைகளை நினைக்கின்றான். As superior status. It is so that he conceives his gods. இதன் அடிபடையில்தான் அவன் கடவுளர்களை நினைக்கின்றான் கடவுளர்களை தன் மனதர்க்குள் ஒருவாக்குகின்றான். It is so that he constructs his heavens. இதன் அடிபடையில்தான் அவன் அவனுடைய சுருக்கங்களை மனிதன் அமைக்கின்றான். இது மனிதனுக்கு வழங்கப்பட்டுள்ள ஒரு மாபெரும் கொடை. இது மனித மனிதக்குரங்கர்களுக்கு கிடையாது. மனிதனுக்கு இந்தக்கு திறமைகள் எல்லாம் இருக்கின்றது. He can conceive of a higher thing than his present one. அப்படி இருக்க அப்படி இருக்கும்போது இது தடையா இருக்கின்றது. உள்ள விஷயங்களை மனிதன் நினைக்கின்றான். அப்புறிந்தாலும் கூட மனிதனுக்கு வந்து எதோரு தடை இருக்கின்றது. அதனாலதான் வந்து இந்த உயர்வான விஷயங்களை அவன் நம்பி இருக்கின்றது அடைவேண்டும் என்று நின்னினாலும் கூட அவனுடம் இருக்கக்கொடிய எதோரு விஷயம் அவனுக்கு தடையாக இருக்கின்றது. அது என்ன தடை என்பதே பகவான் விளக்குகின்றார். அடுத்த பேரக்ராப்பு விளக்குகின்ற. அடுத்த போர்ஷன் விளக்குகின்ற. படிக்கலாம்.
But it is not so that he reasons his reason conceives of a possible earth and a possible humanity. His dream of God and heaven is really a dream of his own perfection. But he finds the same difficulty in accepting its practical realization here for his ultimate aim as would the ancestral ape if we called upon to believe in himself as the future man. His imagination, his religious aspirations may hold that end before him. But when his reason asserts itself rejecting imagination and transcendent intuition he puts it by as a brilliant superstition contrary to the hard facts of the material universe. It becomes then one be his inspiring vision of the impossibility. All that is possible is a condition limited and precarious knowledge, happiness, power and good.
Thank you sir, thank you. Explanation படிங்.
What is it mad sir?
படிங் மேடம்.
Man's reason rejects his imagination and the aspiration. But his reason prevents him from thinking of such a practical possibility or act for humanity. The Aravindos say man dreams of his own perfection. As a result, he dreams of God and heaven. Yet he has difficulty in accepting that he can realize the absolutes he aspires for here on earth. It is similar to the ape which could never foresee the possibility of itself evolving into a man. Man can conceive of such a possibility of higher life by his imagination and religious aspirations. But he is pulled down by his reason. Reason always rejects intuition and imagination, calling them as superstitions. He cannot see beyond the hard facts of material life. Whatever man sees in his inspired vision seems to be for his reason as something impossible. Hence, man has to put up with what appears to his reason possibly. Limited knowledge, happiness, which cannot last long, power and good limited in their capacity. Thank you sir.
Thank you madam, thank you. நம்ம பாத்தோம். மனிதனுக்கு வந்து அந்த imagination intuitive power ஒரு பக்க இருக்குது. அந்த அதை இருக்க இருக்கனாலதான் அவனால வந்து இம்மாறு உயர்விஷயங்களை அவனால வந்து அதை நாடம் முடிகின்றது. அது கூறித்த அது கூறித்த ஒரு கற்பனை செய்து பார்க்க முடிகின்றது. அனால் அந்த மனிதனுக்குள்ளே இருக்கக்கூட இன்னொரு அம்சம் இருக்கின்றது. அது தான் அவனுடைய reason. ஒருபொரம் imagination and intuition, மறுபொரம் மனிதனுக்குள்ளே இருக்கக்கூட இன்னொரு விஷயம் என்ன என்றால் அவனுடைய அந்த பகுத்தரியம் கொணம். அது reason வந்து என்ன நினைக்கின்றது? இதெல்லாம் வந்து நினைக்கிறோம். இதெல்லாம் imagine பண்ணி பார்க்கிறோம். சரி intuition ல வருது. சரிதான். நடைமறையில் சாத்தியம் இல்ல. இந்த உலகத்தில் நடைமறையில் சாத்தியம் இல்ல. என்று மனித மனம் வாதாடுகின்றது. அந்த உண்மை நம்ப மறுக்கின்றது. மனிதனுடைய ஒருபொரம் எப்படி நினைக்குது? நூற்பொரம் எப்படி நினைக்குது? அப்படிங்கிடார் பகவான். இந்த உலகத்தில் வந்து இந்த பூமியில் வந்து இதெல்லாம் நடைபெறுவது என்பது என்பது சாத்தியம் இல்லை என்று அந்த அறிவுசாரந்த மனம் எண்ணுகின்றது அப்படிங்கிடார். இந்த அறிவுசாரந்த மனம் என்பது ஒருபொரம் மனிதனை மனிதனை கீழுகின்றது என்றுதான் பகவான் கூறிப்படுகின்றார். ஒருபொரம் அவனுடைய அந்த imagination intuition கற்பனை அந்த intuition ஒரு உயர் ஞானத்தின் உண்மையின் வெளிப்பாடு. இதெல்லாம் வந்து மனிதனை ஒரு உயர்வான விஷயங்களை நோக்கி நம்பிக்கியுடன் அழைத்து சென்றாலும், மறுபொரம் அவனுடைய அறிவுசாரந்த மனம் என்ன செய்கின்றது? அவனை கீழ்நோக்கி இழுக்கின்ற. அது உன்னுடைய மனிதனுடைய அந்த கற்பனா கற்பனா சக்தியையும் அந்த intuitive knowledge அதையும் அது நிராகரிக்கின்றது. மூடனம்பிக்கைகள் இங்கின்ற அடிபடையில் அது நிராகரிக்கின்றது. அதைப் புற்றுவரிக்கும் இந்த material life புரண்சாரந்த விஷயங்களில் காணக்கொடிய உண்மைகளைதான் அது ஏற்றுக்கொள்கின்றதை ஒழிய இத்தைய உயர்விஷயங்களை அது ஏற்றுக்கொள்ள மறுக்கின்றது அப்படிங்கிடார். இதெல்லாம் வந்து நடக்க முடியாத விஷயம் அப்படிங்குதான் மனித அவனுடைய அறிவு வந்து ஒருபொரம் மனிதனுக்கு வலியூர்த்துகின்றது. அதெல்லாம் என்ன நடைபெறுகின்றது? மனிதன் வந்து தற்போழுது அவனுக்கு வழங்கப்பட்ட நிலை என்பது இருதி என்று ஏற்றுக்கொண்டு